I'll call a meeting to order. Before we jump in, let me read the evacuation procedures. In the event of an emergency evacuation, an alarm may sound. Everyone should exit the building by way of the nearest stairwell in a safe and effective manner. If the nearest stairwell is blocked by smoke, use the other stairwell. Do not use the elevator. Once you've reached the main floor, follow the exit signs to exit the building and quickly proceed away from the building. Please be mindful of others evacuating and of emergency vehicles. With that said, we'll jump to the minutes. You all have received the minutes prior to the meeting. Any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Minutes are approved. Is there anybody who wishes to provide public input on items not on the agenda?
On the agenda.
On the agenda. I'm sorry. I read the bottom of the sheet first. If there's none, we will continue on. Site plan, Roger. NICE's addition of storage tank facilities and access road in the Stock Creek Industrial Park off of Frank Bird Boulevard.
That's right. It's a site plan for just the relocation of that facility. The property's identified on tax map nine, parcel 27.12, and is zoned industrial. The facility would be an 89 feet by 20 feet concrete basin that is nine feet tall and will have an eight-foot fence around the top of that. And the storage tanks will be placed down in that basin. The required setbacks is 40 feet from the property line in the industrial zone. This site plan shows that the proposed structure will be six feet from the side property line that abuts the railroad right of way. The design review board for the development has already granted a conditional approval. That condition is based on the approval of this body and further down the way, it'll take a variance that they've already applied for but won't be heard until next week by the BZA for that side setback. They weren't required to because of the size of the project, but they have submitted a drainage and erosion plan, and it has been reviewed by our stormwater department.
Any questions or comments? We have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
If there's no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion to approve the site plan, subject to the other approving bodies, is granted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Hearings, Burger Property Concept Plan by Bob Heron off of Old Niles Ferry Road. Doug?
Yeah, this is just a concept plan, so there's no action required by the planning commission. As you'll see, there's simply five lots on the corner of Murphy and Old Niles Ferry This is a major subdivision because it's five lots, so the future preliminary plat will require drainage planning for it. They may require detention pond. It is quite sloped coming off of Old Niles Ferry Road. They may actually have to lay the lots out in a little bit different position, and we may have some driveway restrictions in the future, but that would be at the preliminary plat stage. We wouldn't do that now. I mean, I have been out there to look at it, but we haven't done a full evaluation with the highway department. I just wanted you to look at it. The owner wanted to have a concept plan to see if the planning commission had any issues with it. I don't see there being any. And we have already received the soil maps, so the soil is good.
It is a concept plan. We do not have to approve or disapprove, but the purpose of the concept plan is to get any feedback if anybody has any thoughts prior to moving to the preliminary. Any input? If not, Doug, thank you for bringing the concept plan.
I've got a question, actually. Where he said that there were no issues, but it sounded like to me that you just gave issues, so explain that to me, please.
I'm not sure what you're...
Well, as far as the drainage, et cetera.
There's nothing that jumps out that can't be resolved in the future.
Okay, well, that's not all that's enough, yeah.
Preliminary final plats, major subdivision, re-subdivision of lot 93WR of the Homestead subdivision off of Long Raffle Road.
Yeah, I've actually got two plats in here for you. Item D1, that's the proposed plat. And if you flip over, you'll see another D1. That's the previous plat. I think I have the year in there. I think it was 2006 or '08. If you look at the second D1, what has occurred over time is lots 93W through 97 have all been combined into one lot. The gentleman was going to put one house on it. That didn't work out. He has put a driveway in there, portion of it was previously, but on the first D1, you'll see a shared driveway easement. All of the lots have road frontage, but the easement's actually because it's a mountain and it's for ease of access. They're simply putting the lot lines back in to market him. They tried to sell it as one lot for a long time, and it didn't do very well, so he's thinking this might help him liquidate the lots. Nothing has changed. Environmental Health Department has no comments at this time. I will double-check with them before we sign the final plat, simply because there has been the issue of driveway being completed. I don't believe there's been any other disturbance. I can't tell that there's been any being on those lots, other than that driveway being gravelled, and it's along the lot lines pretty much anyway. So I don't see there, I don't think there'll be any problems. I have the outstanding items to be completed on page three. There's just one. Signature plats, including environmental health department certification, pending a final review, and a $40 per lot plating fee.
Any questions or comments, Bruce?
Motion to approve for staff recommendation.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Replat is approved, subject to staff recommendations. Preliminary final plats, minor subdivisions, Potter Property off of Galen Road by Sharon Potter, three lots.
Yeah, we actually have, it looks like four lots here. They've actually done a plat on the entire remainder, so I'm not counting that as a lot. It's simply a remainder over five acres. It's actually 16.9 acres. Lots one, two, and three all have county road frontage. And I was corrected by the surveyor. He said there's actually over eight acres there, but when I added them up, I only came up with 7.1. I guess there is eight. There's over eight acres. There's really no issues here, other than lot two has a really steep bank. It would be very difficult to put a driveway up it so that the easement is simply for lot two to have access across the existing driveway of lot three. We're just going to put a note on the plat this time for a common driveway. Those lots are substantial in size. Lot one is four acres, lot two is two acres, and three is two acres. Not knowing exactly how the soil type is, they can possibly be re-divided, and they could extend that easement in the future, so that's an option for the owner. The outstanding items to be completed are on page four. Number one, signature plats, including environmental health department certification, pending final review, and a $20 per lot plating fee.
Any comments or questions, Bruce?
Well, since I've got my light on, I don't see a location tied to an intersection. I think it should be necessary somewhere.
We'll make sure it gets on there.
Any other questions or comments?
What is that? Is that a structure up there or a wall?
Yeah, it's a house. It's actually pretty close to the county road.
Pretty close, but it isn't.
It's already existing, and it's really an older place for the easement.
Just want to make sure that that doesn't easement.
You know, I don't know that it does, and I mean, they could scoot it over, but then you're skewing the center line of the easement as well with the drive, so whatever your preference is.
I want to put something that's easier.
We'll make sure there's a 10-foot side easement on it. I said that.
Any other comments?
Motion to approve on completion of outstanding items.
We have a motion to approve with completion of outstanding items. It's included in the outstanding items to ensure the setback of the shared easement and a tie. How did you say that, Bruce?
To a intersection.
To a tie to an intersection on the plat.
Property Sessur has complained to me several times about maps that don't have ties and they have trouble placing them at times.
Do I have a second?
I'll check on it.
If there's no further comments, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Re-subdivision of lot 15 of Watershaw subdivision by Mark and Cokie Best, two lots with county road frontages. Variance request to number of lots off of a single entrance. Doug?
Yeah, there's several plats I've attached, or at least attachments under miscellaneous one, and we'll go through all of them. Just give me a second. We're going to go through the history here, too. I'd like you to know, Mark Best is here as well to speak. He's the current owner of the property. If you have any questions that I can't address, I'm sure Mark will be more than glad to speak to the planning commission. I don't know if you've had time to read this. Actually, let's look at the miscellaneous one. This is a simple division of the property. They simply want to divide the property in half, each being about two and a quarter acre. So there's actually less than five acres to start with. And they want to, they're asking for the variance just to simply split the property in two. There's two residences, or two potential residences, on the property, and they want to do it for family reasons. I'd like to direct your attention to the next plat, miscellaneous one. I didn't put, I thought there was page numbers, but there's not. It's simply the second page. This is Watershaw subdivision. It was approved in 1978 as a 28-lot subdivision with Watershaw Drive being the main road off of Disco Loop. Watershaw was the main entrance road, and then it went to Island View Drive, which is the road that makes the T with the two cul-de-sacs at the end. At that time, from what I could tell from my research, before they even got final plat approval, several people had come in wanting to buy these lots and were already asking the planning commission if they could re-divide them. That became a concern of the planning commission, and they basically approved the plat with the condition, and the note is actually on there. You can't read it, but any future subdivision would have to go back to the planning commission, which, if it was over two lots at the time, it would have had to go back anyway. But that was one of the conditions of approval. The next month, one of the tracks came in for re-division, and the planning commission turned it down. But they didn't say anything other than they were concerned about population density. And they basically gave instruction that if the developer wanted to re-divide, they just bring a whole new plat in, and that never occurred. Over the next several years, many of the lots on the northern section of Island View Drive, that's the T to the left, were re-divided, as well as a few lots on the southern section of Island View Drive. And if you look at the next drawing, it's actually at a different position on the page, and it is hard to see. I apologize. It'll kind of give you a total of where we're at now. Anyway, this went on from '78 until about 1996. There were several re-subdivisions of the lot, several of the lots, and most of the lots were on Island View because they had lake frontage. In 1996, the number of lots off of the single entrance was brought to the planning commission for the request to divide a track that would have resulted in more than 40 lots off of a single entrance. In February, this plat was approved, what did I say? September of 1978. In February of 1978, the planning commission adopted the subdivision regulations, and that was for the first time, that was, from what I could tell, the first time the subdivision regulations had a limit on the number of lots off of the single entrance, which was 40 lots off of one entrance. It didn't become an issue until 1996. One of the owners wanted to divide one of the lots that would have gone over 40. What he did is he combined one lot with the property he had, re-divided two lots into three, so the number remained the same. But that was bought before the planning commission. I don't know what happened in the interim. If you look at the third drawing I've given you, there are actually 42 lots currently off of the single entrance. And what I'm calling the single entrance is Watershaw Drive. And I've also labeled four other properties that have access off of Watershaw Drive, but it's not their exclusive access. So there's 42 exclusively off Watershaw Drive and four additional lots that have access to Watershaw Drive. I would like to mention that, because I think it is important, Watershaw Drive is a 26-foot wide paved road between the curbs, and Island View Drive is a 26-foot wide road between the curbs, and Disco Loop Road, which serves the entire subdivision, is 20-foot wide, which is standard for a county road. I mean, they have numbers that are below what we require for subdivision. I will answer any questions. I think Mr. Best may want to speak to you. The outstanding items to be completed are, number one, the consideration of the variance request by the planning commission, and number two, signature plats, including environmental health department certification, pending final review, and a $20 per lot plating fee.
I'd like to add one more condition. I think we need to show the flood plain on the plat.
Go back one.
Flood plain, flood plain. No flood plain there.
Yeah, he's got it right there. There's a flood plain problem up to here, too.
My name is Mark Best, and, forgive me, I've been fighting allergies for two weeks, so if you can't understand me, just ask me to repeat something. But I just kind of wanted to go over how we got to this point, the steps through this. My son, he found the lot. He'd been looking for lake lots for probably five years. Come to us, my wife and I, and said he'd found one. We went and looked at it, checked the restrictions on the subdivision, and we were able to build a smaller home. You know, some of these you have to build a huge home. This one, you didn't have to build a huge home. And you could subdivide if it was left, an acre, over an acre was left, you could divide that point. And we didn't have any plans to, we're not developers. I mean, this was going to be our home. We sold our home. We'd been in for 30 years. And purchased the lot, and at that time, together with our son, and at the closing, agent or property owner never did, you know, we told them we intended to split the lot with our son. Nothing was ever mentioned about not being able to split the lot at that time. We started building our home in April, and we finished it pretty much this week. We're supposed to have our final inspection Monday. The lot did, I forgot to say, it did have a two-story barn on it, and our son, that was his plan. He was going to build a residence in that home on the second floor of that. We went, had a survey done two, three weeks ago, had the soil test for this meeting, and took it to planning, and we, at that time, we were showing four lots. We were able to get, have, it's almost a five-acre lot. Took it to them. Soil looked good. They said the plan looked good at that time. Got a call back that afternoon and said, whoops, you know, we've got a, may have a problem with that about subdividing it. So that's kind of where we're at, that point. One of the restrictions from the Watershaw subdivision is that there can only be one residence on the lot. So there, we're stuck with that. We're in a bad situation from that. I guess Doug mentioned your Watershaw Drive. I guess I'll, the first part was from personal, this other, make some observations and some information on this. I am a professional engineer. I worked with TDOT. I was a traffic, regional traffic engineer for 10 years, and then the last 10 years, I've been managing the traffic engineer. So we do a lot of traffic studies. I'm familiar with, you know, safety and operational of roadways. And I don't know if you all, if anybody familiar with the subdivision? Have you been, I mean, it's deserted. I mean, people, they drive their golf carts along the road, and everybody walks there. So, you know, the operational part of it, there's no safety issues. Operation works. Do you all have a drawing? I've got a drawing of the lots, the way they're broken up. I mean, the way you understand it goes out from Disco, and then it tees out. Watershaw goes left, and Island View goes to the right. And we're, if you keep going, you drive right into our lot. We're right on, so there's five entrances, or five lots, before you get to our subdivision. So then the lot split. I'm not sure where the 40...
That's all I have, really.
Okay, yes. So, okay, that's, I was going to pass that around, but you all have that. I guess that's kind of... Not sure, I guess, where the 40, you know, lots come from, but as far as, you know, as Doug mentioned, it is a 26-foot roadway. I'm assuming emergency, you know, being able to get in is part of that, and access in and out. You know, accessing in and out is easy. The 26-foot road is almost like a three-lane on some of our roads. You know, we have eight, nine-foot lanes, so it's almost to be looked at as a three-lane road. You know, plenty of room for emergency vehicle to get through if there's an incident or a wreck or something like that.
Can I explain the regulation a little bit from 1978? I don't know if that might help things. You can have 40 lots off of a single entrance. Road width, in the regulations, you can have up to 20, you know, it would be there, if you had 40 lots, it would be either 24, 26 foot wide. In 1978 through 2006, the planning commission regulate, the subdivision regulations that the planning commission approved, allowed for 40 lots off of a single entrance. If you added an internal loop, which is just one loop, you could gain 20 lots, and you could do that twice. So you could have 40 lots plus a loop is 20, is 60, plus a loop is 80. That was the maximum. When we sat down in 2002, '03 through about the beginning of 2006, before we changed the regulations, we looked at that again. What we had included, one of the things that I had spoke with the planning commission, Mr. Dunlap, and a lot of people, engineers, is a lot of the property that we were dividing from 2005 on was property that was further away from county roads. The better, more accessible county road property has been divided over the years. So the property that's harder to get to is usually in the back. So there was some concession made to allow for more lots off of those single entrances. We created two different scenarios. We still allow only 40 lots in the regulations off of a single entrance, but we now allow four loops for a total of 120 lots off that same entrance. And then we also gave developers an option to build what we call as a boulevard, where the boulevard would be in one easement, but you'd have two 20-foot roads with two lanes each going in and out of the subdivision. So that's where the 40 lots comes from. I don't know where it came from in 1978 originally, when we, you know, when they went with it. In 2006, we just continued on with what was there before. And there's different, you know, thought behind why that occurs in the first place. Most of it is safety-related, from what I understand.
Does anybody have a question, any question for Mr. Best?
Doug, do you know why lot 23 was turned down? I'm just curious.
No, I have no...
It says lot 23 was turned down.
What I read in the minutes was that, you know, they, when they approved the plat in September of 1978, they actually made a statement at the time that, keep in mind, I didn't read any statement where they were concerned with the number of lots off the entrance. What the concern was, and what they said, was they were concerned with population density in the area, being that it was a more remote part of the county in 1978. And they basically said that they wanted a note on the plat that any future divisions would have to go before the planning commission, and that note is on that first plat in 1978. So when the plat came, lot 23, when it came in, they simply turned it down and told the people that were developing it, I didn't even think they were the developers. They were someone that bought the lot. They told that person, go back and tell the developer to give us another plat showing how many lots you really want here, and that plat never came back. And then several years went by, and people start, on the left side of the subdivision, start dividing theirs left and right, and then some people on the right said, well, we're going to do it. And then in 1996, all of a sudden, they're up to 40. And then that's when it came back to the planning commission.
Let me recognize David for a moment. He's got a question for Mr. Best.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Best, just for clarification, lot 15B is your residence. It's being completed as of now, correct?
Yes, it is.
And the two-story, that's the existing barn. It's been there for years.
Yes.
And that's what your son plans on?
Yes.
Has there been any improvements to that building as of now?
The barn?
I mean, is it under construction, under remodeling now, or has there not been any improvements as of now? All right, thank you very much.
Commissioner French?
I guess one last question. Watershaw Drive and Island View, and Island View Drive are county roads?
Yes, sir.
So the county is responsible for maintenance of that. What about Disco Loop Road? Who, is that?
County.
That Tulsa County? Okay. Well, I didn't say that. I didn't see. Okay. Get the next sentence. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Lefaline?
I don't have any problem with the plat, but on the original plat, it's got a 100-foot water hazard boundary. I don't know that you can just take that away automatically.
I'm sorry, Mr.?
The original plat has a 100-foot water boundary, water hazard boundary map line shown from the water's edge. I don't think you can just take that away.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, we'll make sure the plat's in order. Mark is right. His plat came in with four lots, and I was hurried when I asked the surveyor to send me something. I said, just get me a PDF and show two lots. If you approve the variance, we'll make sure the two lots work for what Mark wants and what the Health Department can approve. That line might not be straight down the middle. It might be zigzagged. It might even be off an easement. The idea is to get two lots, and we'll make sure all the notes from the previous plat get on this plat. We'll make sure they're all on there.
Another question about the previous plat. It looks like it shows a TVA flowages going up into the property, which he doesn't, and maybe that's something he hasn't got to either. See that?
Well, the TVA flowages is shown.
It shows an 820 boundary, but the original map shows it going up into the lot. You see that shaded area?
I think the water hazard area was just something that they established around the lake at the time in lieu of a defined...
I understand what you're saying. You've thought of two different things here.
Yep.
I mean, you've got to live with the old TVA maps, is what I'm saying.
I got you.
Are you talking about that finger?
That finger, that looks like it might have been a TVA flowages going up there, just like between 17, 18, where it actually crossed the road instead.
That's actually a foot.
Yeah, we'll check that, though, because the flood plain maps have changed, so it needs to be on the current flood plain map, not just because it's on this plat.
No, that's not flood plain. No, that's not floodplain, that's flow adjustment.
We'll make sure that's, we'll make sure whatever needs to be on there's on there.
Two different things.
Okay, now we had another que, do we have any other questions?
No.
I do for Mr. Best.
Okay, we got a question for Mr. Best.
Sorry. That's that finger that we're talking about, the shade there, is, is there been any fill or has that been excavated and filled in in any way, or does that still remain?
I don't think he would know. I don't think we could tell either.
Really?
I mean, if Gary gets out there and has a problem with it, he, Gary hadn't indicated any problem with the soils for the division, and he'll definitely work around that area and sure.
So with the final plat or preliminary plat that comes back to us, Gary, that very well, that finger could very well be gone or, or made smaller, correct?
Well, first off, the plat won't come back to you if you approve it. It'll be staff approved, and we'll make sure, like we always do, that all the proper notes are on there. I'll go back to the surveyors since you mentioned it, make sure that flow adjustment and all the technical information for the flood limits are on the plat.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the plat with variance.
With the variance, okay, just to make sure that...
Yeah, with variance. Commissioner McCallum, you made the motion, and Geneva second, okay. There's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Best.
Thank you.
Make sure you work with Doug, get everything straightened on the plat. Lot 1R Tarwater and Orr subdivision off of Highway 411 South and Old Miles Ferry Road. John, you handling this one?
I guess so, Doug just turned his light off. This comes as a, as a replat. This is one of the detention areas that we had a problem with in the past, and, and by the way, we will have a public hearing next month to change our regulations about the ownership and maintenance of these types of detention areas. This will actually resolve the past problem with that detention area. In the past, it was a standalone detention area of unknown ownership, and it went to tax sale, and somebody bought it, and Mr. Tarwater repurchased it and wants to combine it with his existing lot that fronts on US Highway 411 South. This could have been a fairly simple deal, but the, the detention area has been reconfigured, and we've got the engineering on that to show that it is justified to be reconfigured to accommodate a driveway going from Old Miles Ferry and on to Lot 1R. Now that, by the way, the twelve-foot ingress and egress easement really needs to come off because you can't grant an easement to yourself, this is actually a part and parcel of the property. I think that needs to be re-designated as a driveway. And one of the reasons I brought it back to you was, is it will resolve one of the issues that we had outstanding of one of the standalone lots. And second, this will provide some access, it's gonna be very limited, twelve-foot ingress, egress easement, doesn't provide you much access, but it does provide some access from basically a residential road, Old Miles Ferry Road, to a commercial lot. The main portion of Lot 1R is zoned commercial, and so I just wanted to bring that before you. I don't think this is gonna constitute a main entrance, twelve-foot wide driveway doesn't constitute a main entrance to a, to a commercial lot. There are other lots along Old Miles Ferry that have a similar situation. In fact, just down, I think, was it the John Young property, has a similar situation going from the back on the Old Miles Ferry, a gravel drive, to the front, which is a commercial lot. So it's not uncommon down through, down through there, I think there's a few others that also have that character. Wanted to bring this to you for your approval because it wasn't just a standard type of a combination, it had some quirks to it, and I would like for your review of it and your approval.
Mr. Tarwater, you understand that planning has recommended a note, or there'd be a note on the plat, that commercial business truck traffic shall not use the entrance off of Old Miles Ferry?
If there may or may not be a lot that went to other places that joins the water and water, why it might not in the rest of the one, you want my law?
John, you wanna speak to that?
Well, basically, we've got a subdivision that's residential back there, having heavy truck traffic go past that residential. Twelve-foot wide drive is not gonna really accommodate much truck traffic. I understood from your discussion with me that this is for you to access from your property across the street easily on to your property on 411. That purpose can be accommodated with this, but heavy truck traffic probably would not be appropriate next to a residential subdivision.
The driveway that is, that the butt's on property, it joins on Howard's, or the Howard that works for Lifter.
Yeah, come, will you come up to the microphone?
The property, the butts, the end of my property has a commercial access that comes out the back, that big trucks and stuff come in, that joins the first house that I built. And I built the four houses down through there at the time.
That driveway is quite a ways away from those residential lots, it's on the other side of that metal building, if I remember correctly.
It's probably, probably sixty foot or eighty from the property line, but yes, it is, it is a little farther away from the residential house.
It goes, it goes to the other side of that metal building.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm, I just, I'm concerned about putting a heavy commercial traffic right next to a residential lot that we have approved. This is not zoned commercial, that detention area is not zoned commercial, and that's the reason for the, for the note. My understanding, my discussion with you, the main purpose of the driveway is just to allow you personally to get from your lot...
Correct.
...to the front easier.
Correct. Yeah, that was, that's what I'm shooting for, but I didn't understand why he could run big trucks out his driveway on the back and I wouldn't be able to mine. That's the only, that's the only reason I was asking.
I think it was because it was a little bit, it developed a little bit differently than this property. We don't know what's gonna be on your property in front. If it generates a lot of traffic, it would not be a good policy for this Planning Commission to encourage heavy traffic, heavy commercial traffic along Old Miles Ferry Road. I mean, that's mainly a residential access road for, for properties along it. Noting the exceptions, and noting the character, the exception of property next to you, that driveway is quite a ways away from any of the, of the residential properties. This one that you're proposing is right next to one that's built for residents.
Right, it's probably half, half the distance. Mine's probably half as much as the other one is, correct?
Well, it's right next to it. I mean, it's right next to Lot Five.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it, but it's from the house to the driveway?
Mm-hmm.
It's probably half, half the distance between Howard's house and the other driveway, but...
Mr. Tarwater's correct. The house on Lot Five is, is moved over a little bit to the left. That's his only point. It's about thirty feet from the driveway instead of sixty.
Yeah. Or more, that's a big lot, that's the biggest lot of those four out there, that was a...
How wide, how wide's the road on, on the other side of the metal building, if it's being used for commercial traffic? How wide is it? Is it less, is it twelve feet, or is it more than twelve feet?
It's probably about the same.
About the same, yeah.
Bruce, I would like the surveyor to put a tie on this one to some intersection, and personally, I think the detention area ought to be dimensions so that you know the size of it, so they don't increase it or decrease it. Don't you typically dimension the, the size of the detention area?
Didn't have it on the previous plat, I don't think. We don't have a previous plat. It just had a dotted line showing the...
Top of pond.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
It's a very shallow detention area, it's not a real defined, you know, pond-y type situation.
But it was engineered, right?
Yes, it's engineered.
Yes.
I still think it ought to be dimensions.
All right, any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Tarwater. All right, Bruce, you wanted a tie to an intersection and dimensions on the detention area? You wanna put that in your motion?
I got a quick question, John. Is he doing away with the lot line, so this becomes one big lot? When he does that, is this detention area not commercial at that point?
No. The zoning is purely from action of the county commission, and it ends at the back, the main back portion of Lot One. So L2 would be actually the division line between the commercial RAC zone and the, the detention pond would still be residential.
Even though there's not a lot line there anymore?
Wouldn't matter.
When, when you specify, when we rezone under RAC, we specify a distance.
Gotcha.
Well, we actually, in this case, we specified a property, and it was just that property as it was configured before, so you, you would have to actually come back in and request for rezoning to add the detention area to that RAC. Just because we replat doesn't change the, a, action by the legislative body.
So he's gonna have a property with two different zonings on the same property?
Yes, and that's not uncommon.
Particularly in RAC, because if you go down RAC, we've zoned deeper lots, but limited it to the, to a certain depth. Commissioner French?
Should we put a condition on this particular twelve-foot egress and ingress that it should not be used as a commercial entrance?
That was one of the recommendations, a note on the plat, that commercial business truck traffic shall not use the entrance off of Old Miles Ferry Road. I guess you would need to put that on to the, well, that's, that's what the recommendation is of staff.
If you look at page eight...
Have you checked the tree situation?
Yeah, it's cut down.
Okay.
Was the retention pond put here for those lots, that, those residential lots, is that the purpose of it?
Yes. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I've got a plat here from 2004. Recorded plat from 2004 shows the detention pond, and it's tied to that.
To those lots and was not tied to Orr, to the, to the commercial lot at all?
Actually, the, the engineer had calculated it to include the commercial lot.
Okay.
He recalculated it, knowing that there's actually, it comes up and rises and come back, comes back down to the, the residential portion, that when the commercial lot comes through for a site plan, it is such, of such size that it's gonna require a detention area anyway. So any detention area for the commercial development will be taken care in the site plan process.
So that part?
Yeah.
The segment from this detention?
That's correct. It'll be a site, it'll be a site plan, it'll be a site plan detention, it won't be a plat
Commissioner French?
Got one more question. How is the drainage off of these residential lots gonna get to that detention pond?
It goes along the road and then cuts across, I think cuts across Lot Five for a portion and goes into the detention area. That driveway's actually gonna have to be put in with care to make sure that there's a cross drain.
That's, that's, okay, that was my question.
Is that correct?
Is there gonna be a tile under the driveway, is there gonna be?
The lots all drain down to the county road, the engineer, they put four driveways in with four tiles, it looks like a regular county ditch. The engineer designed it, they would run down, build up a county ditch, go down to the detention pond, turn, go into the pond, away from the county road.
He's gonna turn on its own and go into the pond? I'm just, he's just gonna turn on its own and go into the pond? I mean, is there gonna be a traffic cop down there directing it how to go, or, I'm just curious.
Well, water seeks its own level.
Is there gonna be another tile there, or is it gonna just...
Yeah, there'll be a pond.
Okay, I'm just curious.
Mr. Tarwater, is this gonna be a gravel or asphalt or concrete driveway? But you're gonna have a tile underneath the driveway, whatever it is.
He recommended fifteen inch tile and, I was wondering, eight, six inch or eight inch with, with all that.
All right, any further questions? Do I have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
We need to add Bruce's comment about...
All right, so it's motion to approve with staff recommendations, in addition, Bruce's request for a tie to the intersection and detention pond. Dimensions on detention. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Long-range planning, staff.
Roger, you wanna...
Just a report on the rezoning off of Leekwire Road. The county commission has sent that back to the Planning Commission, it'll be before you next month. Didn't have time to get it on this agenda.
Okay, it wasn't sent back, it wasn't rejected then?
It was a rezoning.
It was a rezoning on Leekwire Road. From R2 to R1. So they've, they've sent it back. Further discussion?
You just gonna bring it back to the defense side for that one?
I'll bring it back to you guys and you can figure it out.
Commissioner McCallum?
So I just want, I asked John something I meant to ask him earlier when I was getting ready for it.
Go ahead.
The, the planning thing we did over at the Alcoa, about the town, town center kind of thing, is that something that could possibly come fruition in the county at some time? At, like 321 South?
Well, the county's not a town that needs a center. We, we have some wording in our plans about clustering, and if you want to identify more forcefully clustering concept, then the town center type of discussion would have some bearing, but it's not a town, it's a, it's a place.
Whatever they call, I don't remember what, what, they didn't call them town centers, they call them something else.
Well, it's, it, they call it placemaking, which is, what you wanna do is define a character of a place that people can look at and say, that's a place, and it's not just kind of a slough, and...
Because I'm thinking the old Ramsey farm would be a great place to just develop something like that out there on 321 South.
Which one's the Ramsey farm?
About two hundred acres on the right going down.
Is that near Henry Lane?
Just past the...
The left?
Two twenty-one.
Oh, 321.
The little building.
Oh, 321.
The, the, uh, place that says the, calling it that is there on the left.
411, yeah. That, that kind of, that's, that's probably gonna be more like a neighborhood type of development. We have provisions in our regulations already to allow mixed-use development, but nobody has taken those provisions and run with them, because it's just something that, it's not within the mindset of developers' thinking right now. We could accommodate it right now. I have one other thing, and that's to remind you about training opportunities. Next Tuesday, we have a T-Dot presentation on their, their long-range plan, and I would encourage you to go to that if you can. I'd be a good introduction to what some of the constraints are to, to funding new roads and road improvements throughout the state, and one of the reasons why we've had some delays and so forth in, in Blount County. The second one is Thursday, October 29th, I'm gonna keep reminding you of that because that, no... Uh, I'm gonna keep reminding you of that, because that, no matter how many hours you've got, you gotta have private property rights and, uh, as part of your education each year, and that's an opportunity to get that. That's all I have.
How, how, how many hours are you...
No. It's the, it's the fifth Tuesday. Fifth Tuesday. Oh, Thursday, I'm错意了, it's fifth Thursday. Well, I think the one on, on October twenty-ninth will run about an hour and a half, two hours. Uh, the one on September the twenty-ninth is actually gonna be one hour. Uh, the one on the twenty-ninth is here, on, on September twenty-ninth is here at the training room, and the one on, uh, Thursday, October twenty-ninth is in, uh, Faragut, Faragut Town Hall.
And last year, was that two hours?
Yeah, I think we only stayed an hour and a half if they gave us two. Okay. Count and transfer. Tuesday's six.
All right, we got one more item. Public input on items not on the agenda. Anyone in the audience wants to speak to items not on the agenda? Would you like to speak? We are adjourned.